Oh, yes, oh, yes, oh, yes. This Honorable Commission is now in session. Pursue it to adjournment. God bless this country and God bless this county. Mr. Chair.
Our invocation this evening will be given by Commissioner Bob Brown.
That is right. Lord, we come before you, our Creator, our Sustainer, Everlasting Father, the one who gives us hope for an eternal home in heaven. We're so grateful for the fact that we are your children, that we have the distinct honor of being called by you, holding fast to your word and the things that give us life and the truth that never fades. Help us at this meeting to discern those things that are right in your sight. Give us knowledge, but also give us wisdom in using that knowledge to help the people of this county to do the things that will help their welfare. Lord, we know that each one of us are individuals and we ask that you be with us so that we will be able to do these things selflessly. Because, Lord, we know that your Son came here as a servant, that all things should be done through him. And we look to that servanthood that your Son gave us here upon this earth as our example. Be with us as we go forward the rest of this week and this month. We ask this in your Son's name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
If you will remain standing, our clerk will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Each Commissioner report your presence.
We have twenty, twenty commissioners here tonight. I will report to the group that Mr. Moss, due to the illness of his sister, is not with us tonight. Ms. Boyd is out of town with the illness of her father-in-law. Mr. Pomeroy texts me and said he would not be able to make it tonight. And Mr. Sullivan and his wife have the flu, so even though they're four out, our majority vote tonight will remain at thirteen, and a two-thirds vote will be eighteen. Pardon me, sixteen. We have, at this time, approval of the regular agenda. I think Mr. Becker had his hand up. Mr. Becker. All right. I would strongly recommend that these young men are eagerly waiting out there to run back home and study for exams, so we need to get them out of here. So, all in favor with that one stipulation, say aye. Pose light sign. Ms. Bergdorff.
Yes, I was going to ask that we remove number five from the Legislative Committee.
Yes, I appreciate you reminding me of that. I did get a text message on that, so if you will remove that item, the appointment of the Tourism Director from the agenda. That was at his request, and I think you received a copy of that also. Okay.
I guess I'm a little confused why that, the appointment of Mark F. Tourism Executive Director is being pulled. The Commissioner from the Nineteenth District sent an email out to the Commission twice asking he be on the agenda this month, so is there a reason why he's being pulled? Or it seems to be an urgent matter?
I have no idea. That was his request.
It was the request of the appointee?
Yes.
Okay.
Seeing no one else in the queue, approval of the consent agenda? Motion and second. All in favor, say aye. Pose light sign. Approval of minutes? All in favor, say aye. Pose light sign. We now have recognition of the public and...
No, we moved the recognition.
Okay. There's no one on recognition anyway, so when we get to that, we'll be mindful of that. We will now have the recognition of the Tennessee United Soccer Club Division One. Commissioner Becker.
Come on up here, both sides. Yeah, we got both sides over here. All right. So this is the proclamation honoring the Tennessee United Soccer Club, the 2006, 2007 boys NPL team as the U-19 Division One State Champions. Some of these boys, y'all may remember, were up here last year as they won the U-18 Division One State Championship. That team last year, they had several players who have since graduated and are on to further, further doings there, and so this year, the remaining 2006 players and several, several of these boys or 2007 players combined to form essentially a brand-new team within the club. And so, I'll, I've got, I've got medals. I'm gonna, each boy will get one of these. I'm just gonna hand them out right here like this, but I just want to talk about these boys. You know, I've known a lot of them for a long time, even though they were on, you know, different teams and so forth. Hey, come on up. But, but it's a great, great group of boys, a great group of parents as well, and so it's, it's one of those things where, you know, we, we had such, they had, they had such a successful season just in one, just in one year together, one season together. And it'd been nice to sort of see them progress even beyond that. So, the head coach, Jamie Smith, he's, under the weather, he wasn't able to, unfortunately, wasn't able to come tonight, but Jamie Smith, he wanted me to pass along his thanks for the County Commission to, for this recognition and also just how proud he is of the boys and then when they first started the season, you know, trying to get to know each other and had a couple of, couple of hard, hard games in the preseason scrimmages. In fact, one of the games, they lost, it was, it was scrimmage, but lost five to zero, and they turned around and beat that exact same team in the state championship. So, you can see that the progression over the course of the season was tremendous. So Jamie Smith wanted to pass that along. The players, Dylan Atnip, if you're here, y'all can just quickly raise your hand there. Cole Ballweber, John Becker, Ryan Bertotti, Mason Brody, Ethan Cole, Tyler Fair, Sonny French, Ben Frisbee, Justice Gardner, Brock Miller, Holden Preston, Randy Rosales, Evad Arufz, Zeke Rowland, Paul Singlin, Austin Taylor, Austin White, Will Williams, and Landon Ursick. And they all hail from, from various high schools here, specifically the, the public schools in Sumner County, Beach, Hendersonville, Merrill Hyde, and Station Camp, and some of these boys attend to other schools as well. So tremendously proud, proud of this group. So I'll just, I'll just read, read the proclamation now. The Sumner County Board of County Commissioners meeting this regular session on the sixteenth day of December two thousand twenty-four does hereby honor and congratulate the Tennessee United Soccer Club 2006 NPL team for winning the Division One State Championship, and I so move.
Motion and second. All in favor? All opposed? Let's stand and give them up. Mr. Becker, are the coaches present?
No, he was, the, the head coach, he was sick today, so he wasn't able to do anything. You guys can take some more pictures out in the hallway with your medals on. Is that all? Is that, there's some extras here. Here you go. Give that to your mom. All right. Hey, Eric, give that to your mom also. Congratulations, boys.
There's no one present to speak, or no one signed up to speak. Right, we have report of the chair. I just want to make a clarification, if I could, on resignation from the Committee on Committees. Instead of, because of criticism, I should have said, as several people have pointed out to me, as a result of criticism, because I, it made me think about my role as chairman and serving on a standing committee as a regular member. The reason that's never been done is because it's probably just not very healthy to do that. I have to be somewhat impartial, unbiased, listen to everyone, and make good decisions. So whether it was done appropriately or not is, that's not as important as I did glean that from it, and that, so I have resigned from the Committee on Committees, and I hope there are some people who would like to serve in that capacity and do us a very good job on the Committee on Committees. Veteran's service report is attached, doctoring financial statement memos. We have the certificate of recognition that was given, and then we have a public notice that will be read for a public hearing, hearing by our clerk.
The Sumner County Board of County Commissioners will hold a public hearing on December sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four, at seven o'clock PM in the Bethel Brown Commissioned Chambers of the Sumner County Administration Building, located at three fifty-five North Belvedere Drive, Gallatin, Tennessee. Ten ninety A and ten ninety B Old Highway one oh nine north rezoning. Till Real Estate Holdings LLC property owner, Fourth Commission Voting District, Dylan Lambert, applicant is seeking a rezoning from rural residential to light industrial. Subject property is located at ten ninety A and ten ninety B Old Highway one oh nine north, Gallatin, Tennessee, three seven zero six six. Is tax map one one three, parcel zero one one point oh one and zero one one point oh two. Contains three point fifty-one acres and is zoned rural residential. The Sumner County Regional Planning Commission forwarded a positive recommendation related to this item on October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. A copy of this notice is on file at the Sumner County Planning and Engineering Department in the Sumner County Administration Building, located at three fifty-five North Belvedere Drive, Gallatin, Tennessee. Anyone having any interest or desire to ask questions concerning this request is invited to attend this meeting or call six one five four five one six oh nine seven. Persons wishing to speak on agenda items shall sign up for the public comment on the sheet provided at the meeting immediately prior to the commencement of the meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. There's no one signed up to speak to this, but if someone is here that did not sign up that would like to speak, you may at this time. Would you raise your hand if you'd like to speak to this? Would any Commissioner like to speak to it, especially the Commissioner of that district? Seeing no one, I will let you know that this did have a positive hearing, a vote by the Planning Commission. I declare the hearing closed, and now we're ready to vote on the rezoning issue. Do I have a motion? Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Pose light sign, and that passes. Report of county officials. As you know, the written reports are filed and are in your packet. We, at this time, will have election of notice. Do I have a motion? And a second. All in favor, say aye. Pose light sign. All right. We will put that on the board. I think it's typically best to put that on the board. So I'll let the clerk put that on the board.
Each Commissioner record your vote.
That's twenty affirmative votes, so that does pass. We have a report of standing committees now, and I would ask you to help me out a little bit. I came straight from eye doctor's office in Nashville, who numb both eyes, so if you are waving your hands at me to get attention and I don't recognize you, most likely that's what's happened, that I don't see you. Not guaranteeing that, but... Health and Emergency Services Committee?
Mr. Chairman, just two quick things. My own, thank you. Just two quick things. So, the, number one on the, on the list is approve Sheriff's Office PTO policy update. I did have a, a quick conversation. Sheriff Craddock actually did some discussing with, with David Lawing, our Finance Director, and there's one little change, and I'll explain. On that overall, it's about thirty-nine thousand, is how much it was, that we were, we were gonna vote on tonight. But the main thing is, after he consulted with, with David, it would be more efficient to, to move it to be in thirty-minute, I mean, to be in a four-hour increment. Two, two separate things. Sorry. The thirty-nine thousand is, is recurring, but there's also another little piece on that PTO policy, and I want to make sure you understand. Right now, they have thirty-minute increments that they have, like, a point five or whatever, half hour, that they have on the... I, I want to make sure I'm not explaining it wrong. I'm, I'm doing a terrible job. Can I ask, can I ask the sheriff to speak on it? Can I suspend the rule, make a motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
Motion to suspend? A second.
All in favor?
Favor. All right. And I, I think that would be good, because I'm not understanding.
I'm not, I'm not explaining it very well, sorry. Is it on?
Yes, thank you, sir. All right. So the PTO policy that passed out of Health and Emergency Services Committee said that employees could take their PTO time in hourly increments. After some discussion with the Finance Department, it would be much easier for them to apply that policy inside of the Kronos module if we move that to half-hour increments. I'm a hundred percent good with that. It makes it more efficient for the Finance Department. My employees can take in half-hour increments as good as they can hour increments, so I support.
Seeing no one in the queue, all in favor, say aye. Pose light sign.
Thank you so much. That was so much better. I see why it's a sheriff. Second thing I was gonna ask is, on the amending the ECC personnel policies, there was only one little small, like, a couple of small things. Y'all could have read through it. We didn't have any objections in the committee. Basically, it just, it had to do with, with the six-month PTO accrual and a couple of things like that, very small, just to kind of come in line.
Motion and a second. No one's in the queue. All in favor, say aye.
End of my report, Mr. Chairman.
Education?
No report.
Highway? Okay. General operation?
Resolution twenty-four twelve dash oh nine, accept Oak Grove Fire Department deed. I so move.
All right. Motion and a second. Seeing no one in the queue. All in favor, say aye. Pose light sign.
Twenty-four twelve dash ten is approve lease agreement for Congressman John Rose, and I so move.
Motion and a second, and seeing no one in the queue. All in favor, say aye. Pose light sign. Okay. Committee on Committees?
No report, Mr. Chairman.
Legislative?
Twenty-four twelve dash eleven is a resolution to request a real estate transfer tax funding from the state. That was sent from the Tennessee County Association, and it went through Legislative, and the County Mayor emailed about it as well and shared with us in Legislative Committee that, should the state actually pass this, we could bring five point six million dollars a year back to the county. So hopefully all the counties are doing this, but I so move.
Motion and a second. Seeing no one in the queue. All in favor, say aye. Pose light sign.
Twenty-four twelve dash twelve is dedication of Roger Parker Memorial Bridge, and I so move.
Seeing no one in the queue. All in favor, say aye. Pose light sign.
Twenty-four twelve dash thirteen is to amend the standing rules to move recognition before the public permanently, before, recognitions before public, yes, I so move.
Right. Seeing no one in the queue. All in favor, say aye. Pose light sign.
Twenty-four twelve dash fourteen is to set the twenty-twenty-five Commission meeting dates, and I so move.
Motion and a second with no one in the queue. All in favor, say aye. Pose light sign.
That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Folks, this is too good to be true. Let's not mess it up now. All right. Budget Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item twenty-four twelve dash sixteen. Second. All in favor?
Motion and second. All in favor, say aye. Pose light sign.
Which, which ones would, I think, Mr. Chairman, we would, we need to know which ones wanted to be grouped. Mr. Chairman, I would suggest if we wanted to do something like that, because I would like to do some explanation for a few.
Let's just do this quickly.
Yeah, we can, we can.
Would you mind?
We can go, there's a couple of them I need to speak to. All right. Item twenty-four twelve dash seventeen, appropriate forty thousand of a TLE TA grant to the Sheriff's Office for recruitment.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Almost took your job, sorry. Appropriate forty thousand for a grant to the Sheriff's Office.
Okay, let's, I'm all for this, but let's slow it down just a little, okay, and let, let the chairman finish. All in favor, say aye. Pose light sign.
Appropriate thirty-nine thousand two hundred for Sheriff's SRO grant.
All in favor, say aye. Pose light sign.
Appropriate five hundred twenty-nine thousand additional grant funds for the Hendersonville Health Department. I so move.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Authorized transfer of ninety-nine thousand five hundred fifty-five for the Gallatin Health Department, Schiller. I so move.
All in favor, say aye. Pose light sign.
Item twenty-four twelve dash twenty-two is to approve nonprofit allocation panel recommendations.
Motion and a second, and we have Mr. Nguyen in the queue. Mr. Nguyen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I didn't have anything. I was gonna check to make sure my mic was working. Thank you, sir.
All right. You just wanted to put the brakes on. Okay. All in favor, say aye. Pose light sign.
All right. Reallocate ARPA appropriations, several ARPA appropriations. Twenty-four twelve dash twenty-three is to reallocate several ARPA appropriations to the Westmoreland EMS facility. I so move.
All in favor, say, motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Pose light sign.
Okay, this one's gonna be a little bit more. I want to accept the ARPA sub-resee agreement with Gallatin. If you note in your packet, there are a couple of changes from previous. One of these is the date, the effective date is changed to today, when it will have been executed, and then the date of performance, the period of performance should say the earliest of either today or when the period of performance, the technical period of performance started. I so move.
Motion and second. All in favor, say aye. Pose light sign.
Twenty-four twelve dash twenty-five, accept the ARPA sub-resee agreement with Hendersonville, and that is, that will also be subject to those same date changes, just to be compliant with code.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Pose light sign.
Item twenty-four twelve dash twenty-six is to accept ARPA sub-resee agreement with Millersville, also subject to those same changes.
Motion and second. All in favor, say aye. Pose light sign.
Accept ARPA sub-resee agreement with Westmoreland. It with, with the previous change, the changes to verbiage regarding the dates that I had stated earlier, and also noting some other verbiage changes. and also noting some other verbiage changes that this was matching. This is regarding the matching funding and reimbursement, that's some some slight verbiage changes, again, in order to be compliant with federal code.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose light sign.
Item twenty-four twelve dash twenty-eight is to accept ARPA sub-sub recipient agreement with White House, subject to the date changes I mentioned earlier.
Motion and a second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Twenty-four twelve dash twenty-nine is to accept the ARPA sub-receit agreement with Westmoreland State Water Infrastructure Grant, subject to those date changes.
So move.
Motion and a second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose light sign.
Just a quick note on, just a point of information on twenty-four dash eleven. I don't think we need to make another vote on it, but without objection, they, there are some language changes on there that are also relevant to a reimbursement as opposed to an original spend to be compliant with State Water Infrastructure Grant. So that's, Mr. Wong, did I get that correct? Yeah, and, oh yeah, and we referenced the swig itself. So those were those changes. I don't know that we need to vote on again, but I wanted to call those out.
Without understanding.
Yep. Twenty-four twelve dash.
Okay, just a moment. It's the opinion of the attorney that it'd be good to vote on it. A motion?
Motion, so moved.
Second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose light sign, show it unanimous.
Okay, twenty-four twelve dash thirty-one, this is to approve additional funding for the Oak Grove, volunteer fire department station. This is what we just moved, this is what we just approved in budget, and it should be in your packet, ISO move.
Motion and a second, all in favor say aye?
Oh, wait, Ms. Chairman, I'm out of order. I apologize. I'm trying to move quickly here.
Wait just a moment. Commissioner Mansfield, did you want to speak on fifteen or sixteen?
Sixteen.
Sixteen, okay. Let's, let's go back to fifteen if everyone will. We skipped to that one. Do we have a motion?
I have, yeah, I'll just go ahead and rate, state this one out. This to accept the MOU with the county mayor and the Hendersonville Health Department, also subject to the.
Motion.
Dates, changes, and the reimburse, and language relevant to reimbursement.
All right, motion and a second, all in favor?
Uh.
Oh, Commissioner Janong, did you want to speak to this? On fifteen?
No, I was wanting to talk about thirty-one.
Oh, okay, just one more. Then all in favor?
Aye.
Pose light sign, okay, unanimous. Now we're on sixteen. Motion?
We have a motion to, I made a motion to approve.
In a second, all right, so now Commissioner Mansfield?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Just wanted to offer up an alternative here. Because the government is involved with this, the cost has increased by six-hundred-and-twenty-five percent approximately since about two years ago, first spoke with a representative from Oak Grove. Before the government got involved, it was about a hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar project. Now it's over a million. I'm gonna make an amendment to this. Has several parts. First part is to donate the land that we just received to Oak Grove. Second part is to, I guess, stop the plans that we're doing with this ARPA funding and move it to the Westmoreland EMS. The third part is to allocate two-hundred-thousand dollars worth of capital to Oak Grove so they can build their building without government interference, all the extras that were required because we owned it.
Second.
That's my motion.
Does everyone understand the motion? Anyone want to clarify?
I think those should be separate motions. Because they're, some of it, they're not totally relevant.
I will seek the opinion before I make a decision from the attorney. I think the attorney tends to agree that each one of those should be voted upon separately. Commissioner Mansfield, I would agree with that.
All right, I mean, that's three amendments. So that was one, two, and three, is to deed this property over to Oak Grove so it's no longer in the county's possession.
Second.
The second amendment that I propose is to.
What, wait, let's just vote on this one?
Well, I was just gonna explain it in context because it's all related. I mean, it's, it's all related. And the second one was to unencumber ourselves from this plan, all the ARPA funding, redirect that to the Westmoreland EMS facility. And my third amendment was reallocating capital that we were already going to, we try to reallocate tonight, two-hundred-thousand dollars of that to Oak Grove, fifty thousand more than they were two years ago, to account for price increases or costs, to do what they're originally gonna do with their pole barn. That's my third amendment. So deed the property over to them. Amendment one. Amendment two is to unallocate the funding and scrap the plan. Take that ARPA funding to the Westmoreland EMS station, which was discussion budget tonight. And the third one is to allocate capital to, you don't think we, do number three?
I believe you, but you can ask Mr. Sir.
Is it nonprofit donation?
If you're making a nonprofit, the monetary realization has to be published in the paper.
Well, then I guess we can't do my third option tonight, but my first and second is. But third would be for, I guess my third amendment would be to make a nonprofit donation to them for next month, proper time to publish in the paper as a nonprofit donation to the Oak Grove Volunteer Fire Department.
I think the attorney, and I'll ask the attorney to speak to this if I don't sum it up right, but I think he's saying, Commissioner Mansfield, that actually there needs to be notice for donation of this property, legal notice.
So I will, I will restate my first amendment is to donate it with proper notice next month to the.
You're gonna donate it and then make a notice?
No, just my motion is to move forward donating him with notice, so I guess this is our committee process right now.
To direct a notice?
To directly notice for next month to been, to be deeded to Oak Grove. That was amendment one. Second is under encumber of these funds to go to Westmoreland EMS. The third is with notice to do a nonprofit donation to Oak Grove Volunteer Fire Department for two-hundred-thousand dollars.
All right, I'll ask the attorney to speak to that then.
We've got several problems with this. One's gonna be, the property hasn't been deeded yet. I believe they were waiting on the outcome of the commission to be willing to take the property. I don't know if this will change the terms in the transfer of the property. Then also there's the notice requirements for the donation of the property if it comes into the county's hands. Then we've got the funding aspect of this. This, it, this is almost two separate things. We'd have to kill the original motion and then defer this to the next commission meeting is how this would have to go down.
That's why we stated it to with advance notice for the next month to donate the land, with advance notice the next month to appropriate the money.
Assuming they give us the land based on the commission's criteria that's now out in the public. It may not affect the transfer, I just don't know. They could say, no, we're not giving it. So I'm just putting all the options out there that are potential pitfalls that could exist, but.
Last question.
At the end of the day, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I would just, don't want to be out of order. So, so you're saying the deed that from the resource authority is contingent upon it only going to the county, but I mean.
I'm not saying that, no.
So I mean, I guess I'm not understanding the barrier to us then donating land that was donated to us to another nonprofit.
I'm just stating that the deed, the transfer of the property, the ownership has not occurred yet.
Okay, which, but obviously, my first part of the motion, I restated it, that it would, with advance notice in a publication, since it's a nonprofit, we have to have notice according to the finance director.
Yes.
That would be the next month, not now. But that's my motion for to go ahead and move forward with a notice that we're going with the intent of donating this piece of property to the Oak Grove Volunteer Fire Department next year. That was my amendment, number one.
Everything you said is accurate. I just want to throw out the caveat is that we don't have the deed yet. We don't have ownership of the property yet. I just want everybody to understand that.
What is in our packet then? Is the deed written to the Sumner County for us to have ownership, is it not?
Huh? Yeah, it's not been signed because they wanted to see that the commission was gonna proceed on.
Well, we did. We, I mean, we accepted it earlier tonight.
Right.
So, okay.
But that that just happened.
Sure.
So then we've got to make sure that the signatures get on there. Once the signatures are on there, the county has it, then we can do exactly what you said.
Sure, I understand. I'm just looking for a solution to save, you know, eight-hundred-thousand dollars for the taxpayers to reallocate to something else, just because government's gotten involved and made made a monstrosity out of something that shouldn't have been a monstrosity and overcomplicated something that shouldn't be overcomplicated.
Is this something, Commissioner Mansfield, that could be brought up next meeting?
It could, but we have to unencumber these funds. The million dollars contingent tonight, we have to make a decision because it's all contingent upon this ARPA funding that just kind of fell in our lap and didn't really go through the committee process, and we're just stuck with this. And so it's, it's a finding out what the options are unfortunately. So it's, it's a kind of a cut bait situation, if it's the will of the body, but I'm just trying to offer a solution. Again, this is, I was just looking at the numbers, a six-hundred-and-twenty-five percent increase from what was it, two years ago, a hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar project to over a million dollars? That's crazy, at least in my opinion. So I was just trying to look for a solution, offload the property, help them. They don't have to have our same regulations when it comes to building this building if it's not county-owned, is what everybody has said. So give them the property, give them some funding. We've already said we're gonna do it. We're not gonna be bad partners here since we told them we're gonna do something. But I think it's a win-win for everybody. That's just my opinion.
Okay, the original motion was.
It was three parts, but I can restate it again if you'd like to, but.
We possibly need to just vote this up or down and then start all over.
That's, that's.
I think that.
Was to.
So we approve the Budget Committee's recommendation.
We could do my second amendment, which was to unencumber.
Just one moment. We'll recommend to you that we vote either up with the Budget Committee's recommendation or down, and with that vote, then we could dispose of these other things. ARPA fund.
Well, my second amendment is doing just that, so as far as unencumbering the funding. I mean, it's, it's kind of what I guess my motion is, is to unencumber the funding, my amendment.
I would like, second. Who said second?
And could we state that, the amendment again, just for the, for the record, this specific amendment? Is it just to unencumber the funds?
Yes, it's to unencumber the funding and to reallocate towards the Westmoreland EMS station.
I don't, now I'm getting a little confused myself because we're voting on an amendment before the, the original motion. Or I mean, you had three parts of this, so we're, we can't, are we breaking it apart now?
Well, you had instructed me to break it apart into three different ones, so I did. The first one, I guess, if you'd also said if we wanted to wait.
Okay, let's vote on the first one then, okay?
Well, the first one was to deed the property with notification over to the Oak Grove Volunteer Fire Department.
Yeah, okay.
That was the first one.
All right, but then we, we need to vote, vote on that. And I'd rather take a roll call vote on that.
I, so I would, I would make it, I would want to make an amendment to that. And I actually think what I would end up doing was nesting, making a contingent similar to these other things. But, Mr. Chairman, and you have others in queue, I'm not fully understanding what we're trying to do here. I want to make sure I, I don't know that I'm against this. I just want to make sure that I understand what we're trying to do.
I'll explain it without amendments. The simple, simple task is that we are stuck between a rock and a hard place. This is a viable path forward, unconventional, of the fact that Sumner County is involved and owns this property. We've been told you have to have an engineer and architect and all that other stuff. It took a hundred-and-fifty-dollar pole barn project to over a million dollars. A hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar pole barn project to over a million dollars. And that's almost a six-hundred-and-twenty-five percent increase. And so the goal is, okay, if we're the problem, then let's not be the problem. Let's donate this land to Oak Grove Volunteer Fire Department, that's a nonprofit allocation. Let them own the land, then they can build whatever building they want to, and we can allocate nonprofit dollars to them, like we do, did tonight for all the volunteer stuff or other things we did last month. Allocate the funds to them to build the original pole barn. Now, I know it's not probably gonna be a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars now. It might, might not. So that's, that's why I said two-hundred-thousand dollars. Let's just give them a little extra, maybe as contingent. But that was it, and basically we're saving eight-hundred-thousand dollars, and they're still getting the building they originally wanted. That's, that was my idea, just because after watching the budget meeting tonight, we're kind of between a rock and a hard place. But that's, in my opinion, a path forward. But it requires to unencumber the funds, give it to somewhere, and the finance director said we could allocate that to Westmoreland, probably be the best thing to do versus the hollows. He said that might be a problem because of the engineer. So we know we can replace the capital with the Westmoreland EMS station with this ARPA money and put capital back in our account. So that's just a path forward of moving around.
I'm wondering if the granting of a part of the property there from another county agency, if that would be an issue since they gave it to the county and not to an Oak Grove Volunteer Fire Department?
I can't speak for the other members of the resource authority, but I would vote as a member of the resource authority to give it to Oak Grove Volunteer Fire Department. So I can't speak for my other colleagues, but. I'm just trying to find a solution here since we became our own problem in government regulations, and let's doge this thing and get out of the way and save money.
All right, state once again the one part right now that we're voting on. Commissioner Mansfield, the one thing that we're voting on right now, don't give me all three. What are, what is your request right now to vote on?
Well, the only thing it sounds like we can, could do tonight, Commissioner Becker seconded it, is to unencumber the funds for this plan and reallocate that to the Westmoreland EMS station. And which puts capital back in our account. That's kind of the first step. But I mean, I always wanted to do the first step of, hey, let's donate the land. That's more, the most logical thing to do.
Okay, everybody understand that? Does everyone here understand what we're voting on right now? Commissioner Becker, this is about, do you understand what we're voting on or not?
I just want to, so just as info, the Budget Committee last month, we did this exact same thing on many of our items because we're hitting the deadline for these ARPA funds. So what we're doing right now and suggest right now is really no different than what we did on several items last month. I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
All right. I think everyone understands. Anyone raise your hand that does not understand what we're voting on, Commissioner?
Well, I understand what we're voting on. I just want to make sure we're going down the right path. I don't know if the chairman wants to speak now.
Well, I want you to hold. I just want to make sure that everybody understands that part we're voting on right now. Okay, now, there are a lot of people in the queue, and you understand that we have narrated this thing greatly. So Commissioner Wright, do you want to speak to what he's saying now?
Most definitely.
Okay, go ahead. You're the first in queue.
This was presented three and a half years ago before several of y'all were even elected into the seats that you're sitting in. We asked then what was needed, and we jumped through every single hoop. I say we, Oak Grove Volunteer Fire Department did, jumped through every single hoop that was presented. Nothing was said about giving the land to them to save the county money. That wasn't even brought up then, and I appreciate, I wish it was brought up three years ago because we wouldn't be sitting in the situation we are now. And, and I said it a while back. Either approve it or don't approve it. Because we need it. Either approve it or don't approve it, because we need it, and if you're not going to give it to us, the people there in the community, then we're going to have to look somewhere else. We're not asking for a whole lot. Somebody told me it was a drop in the bucket. It's a big drop, but it's a drop in the bucket. What was presented tonight would have been great three years ago, but it's not what we need right now. We need to get this project done. I don't want to see three months from now and nothing. We have nothing there. I'm going to ask, I will be voting against this amendment. I'm going to be asking for the original, what was presented before, for the extra four hundred and something thousand dollars, and let's get this project done for the people in Oak Grove community, including a school of about two hundred and twenty-eight kids that it's a mile and a half from that fire department. Thank you.
Commissioner Genon, do you wish to speak to this, this narrative?
Thank you. I'm on the same wavelength as Mr. Wright. For years now, or several years, this has been in play. The deed through the Resource Authority, they worked through that, and that was a long delay for a lot of different reasons, and it's not the fault of the fire department up there. That was a delay, and then they brought forward plans. They were very diligent in everything they were asked to do, and they had all of the, you know, they went through the hoops, like Mr. Mansfield said, of doing, they had to use an architect. Well, nowadays, these architects, you know, they want you to pay ten, fifty dollars for a screw, so I get it, but I don't think that it's fair to that volunteer fire department for us to do this to a group of people in this, in that community who have been waiting for this commission to provide them the funding that they needed to do this project. I don't know what, it says additional funding. I, I've been sick. I didn't, I wasn't at the budget meeting tonight. I feel that's a very short notice to do that. I didn't know what that was about. I still don't know what that was about, what funding, what additional funding, and other than what we talked about last month. Maybe I'm confused. I am confused, so I'm confused. So...
Okay, let's, go ahead and say, we will just make assumptions. Go ahead.
Right, right. So, what I'm saying is I, I, I don't agree with the fact that we take, what I, what I'm foreseeing based on the, the bureaucracy that comes about in the commission and all these other government things, this is going to get delayed and delayed and weighed out, and I'll be gone and dead before it gets done. So, I am asking that we just leave it alone, do what we were going to do. Like you said, up or down, you know, I don't understand all this, and I'm just saying that I can't vote for something like that, because I, I've seen, I know what we have done, and I, I know I'm not going to be backward, but I don't care. I just feel like they've done all they could do and all their diligence, and the Resource Authority and the state, because that took a long time. They had to go through the hoops of the bar and mow and all that other stuff, so I, I don't know. I, I don't, I don't think I could vote for something like that.
Commissioner Rogers, is this, are you still needing to speak to this narrative version?
Well, uh, yeah. I, Mr. Chairman, I, I'm afraid that we, as county commission, yet again, are getting ready to paint the wrong impression of what a volunteer fire department can and can't do with or without an architect, with or without government's hands involved. Speaking specifically with the Highland Volunteer Fire Department that just is currently doing their Station Two on New Deal Pots Road, I believe, up in God's Country, the north end of the county, they've had to jump through several hoops as a volunteer fire department, even having to have architects, even having to have drawings, working closely with our engineers here at the county level. So, I, while I think I can appreciate what we're trying to do, I just don't want to paint the picture that everything is going to be okay, and Oak Grove Volunteer Fire Department is going to be required to have funding to pay for an architect when there may not be set up for that. I don't know what their financials are. It's not any of my business, but I don't want us, as a commission, to think we're doing good when really we may be harming them in, in the, longer down the road. So, I, I don't, I don't think I can support this unless the chair wishes to suspend the rules we hear from the Oak Grove Fire Chief.
Commissioner Wayne, thank you. Commissioner Wayne?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, like the previous speaker, I appreciate the sentiment of what we're trying to do, but we're in like the eleventh and a half hour, essentially, and I appreciate Commissioner Wright and sharing that this has been three years. I know it's been at least two, because we've dealt with it for two years, of, of constantly, you know, asking for more information. You need to go get this done, and it's just been this forever delay for this fire department. You know, two years ago, if it was at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and a pole barn was going to work, then we should have done it two years ago, you know? Now, we're, we're up against the deadline to where it's high risk to unencumber these funds, and, and sure, we'll put them towards a different project, but I, I don't think that what the suggested amount's going to be enough at the end of the day, you know? I mean, folks, if memory serves me correctly, this building was to house the tanker trucks. Winter's coming. It's going to get cold. They can have a building. So, again, I appreciate what, what's being attempted. I am concerned there's, there's been a, a lack of study outside of a back-of-the-napkin draw-up on this, as far as, you know, hey, what are the true costs? What would actually be needed from the fire, volunteer fire department? The things that we'd actually need to have to, to make a decision, an educated decision, on a change such as this. You know, this has been the works for a little while. While we wait till tonight to, to make those decisions is beyond me, but I, I will not support it. Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I really was going to try to not speak much tonight, but I came here with, expecting to, to vote for it through the way we, we did it through budget, but I, I will not deny that it was very frustrating to receive at the, what was frustrating at the eleventh hour to receive is a, is a four hundred thousand dollar overage, and, and we're up against this kind of, you know, you're in this, between this rock and a hard place, but it occurs to me that we don't necessarily have to be. I actually think I, I'm going to support this amendment, and I'll tell you why. It, the, the thing that's pushing our backs up against the wall is, is the ARPA funding deadline, but we can just, I mean, there's, money is fungible, right? Like the ARPA funding, we can just, the, the amendment, as I understand it, we're going to reimburse ourselves for Westmoreland, so we will have that additional funding. We, we can still, we may end up still being able to approve this as-is, but it at least gives us a little more time to dig into the, you know, this, what happened with this last-minute change that caused this huge overage, and, and we can determine, you know, does it, does it make sense to, maybe it makes sense to give the, the, the land. That's something that I also would not want to consider, you know, right now, but we don't have to, this is, this is different than some of the other ones, where we truly had a, a yes or no before us, because we had, we had certain funds already encumbered. We had certain, we had certain plans already drawn up, and there was work already underway, so we, we kind of, it wasn't an arbitrary deadline. This, this, this does not have to be an arbitrary time in the sand. If we just unencumber the funds, we could still end up doing this exactly the way it is. We could narrow the scope. There's a lot of other things we can do. I think this, this actually loosens our hands to give us a little bit of breathing room. I, I think I'm going to support this.
Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would, I hear a lot of fear from some of the commissioners, and, and it's justifiable. I, I get it, but I want to ask some of my commissioners to reconsider, because if we do this project, everybody's stated that we're at the eleventh and a half hour, or, you know, it may not get done if we change course with regards to the way to do this, but if the government does it, it is going to take longer to complete, if they do it. They could possibly have their, get the Amish people out there, set up the pole barn. They could have it up in a week. I'd like to know if the volunteer, if the Oak Grove chief is interested in owning his own property. If he is, we, we look at going down this path, and I will commit to everybody that whatever committee I'm in, I will try to vote to fast-track this in general operations, legislative, whatever, whatever I can do. I will commit to voting to see this through the way that Commissioner Mansfield has laid it out. It's just about, we would have had it done tonight, and there would have been no hiccups, but because of the law director talking about procedurally, we have to do this a different way, it's got to be looked at a piece at a time, but it's still going to be faster than if the government does this project. Everybody's got to look at all the projects we've done and just know history. When the government does a project, it's going to take a lot longer to get done, so if you're truly interested in getting it done, let them do it. They will do it more efficiently, and they will have what they need, and, and again, I would like to hear from, from Oak Grove to see if they're interested in doing it.
Commissioner Klein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I, I see this proposal as a win-win situation. The Oak Grove Fire Department can build what they want, and we are just reapportioning this ARPA money. The, the whole thing about it is that the design is done. All of the things that have postponed this for three years, the getting the land out of the waste management, that's close to done. The geology has been done. The design is done, if they wanted to go with that design. Everything is right on the cusp of happening. The only thing we'll be doing here is transferring ARPA money to Westmoreland, guaranteeing it gets used and we keep it, and next month, hopefully, we'll have the lease or the, that we, we can prepare the quit claim for the fire department. I'm sure they would much rather own their own property and the other building that's on that property, and the new building that they're going to build than having us control it. So, I, I would encourage all commissioners in this room to think about the fact that this is truly a win-win situation.
Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is, I guess, my question would be legal. When we give this land to the Oak Grove Fire Department, sorry, Mr. Chairman, can you ask legal? Where does our EMS station go? Does it go with the land that's given, or is that another problem we'll have to deal with on another day?
Point of, point of order, Mr. Chairman, and I'm, I'm not trying to be rude, but we're, you narrowed the scope. We are only talking at this point about the transfer of funding. We're not talking about transferring any deeds at this point.
Uh, I understand. Commissioner Lambert? Uh, Commissioner Rogers, was that your only question?
Well, waiting your response from the council, yeah.
That's not, my suggestion wasn't giving away the EMS building. It's the property that we already didn't have that they gave us. It's, it's not about that EMS building. Answer the question.
All right. I, I would have to say...
So, it would be two tracks then?
Yeah, we're, yeah.
Okay.
All right. Commissioner Lambert?
Call the question.
All right, you're the last one in. All those in favor of calling questions, say aye.
Aye.
No.
The ayes have it unless there's a...
Division.
All right, place it on the board.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
All right, the vote is ten to ten, so there was no one else in the queue?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to clarify some statements. Just the hundred and fifty thousand dollars that I mentioned two years ago, that was what was presented when I spoke to a representative from Oak Grove for quite a while. What was related in me, relayed to me was that was the quote, I guess, two and a half years ago, to do a pole barn was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but because the previous county mayor came and said because they didn't own that land, and that the county engineering had to get involved, everything else, that is what increased the price. Again, I've stated that we, we've had four hundred thousand dollars from ARPA allocated for over like two, almost two and a half years. I made the motion and, and budget two years ago. I don't know why this is still here in the commission. It's frustrating for me as well. This, this building never came through general ops from January until now, and it's, you know, it never went through that committee process, they hammered stuff out, so we talked, it's not, shouldn't have been a last-minute thing. There's a lot of things that's gone wrong with this process, but I just wanted to clarify that at that time, it was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is what they said it would cost, but the county's the one that said, no, because it's on county land, we're going to make it be more expensive, and that, that was what the previous county mayor said and came, came with, and that's how this has just exploded in cost. So, I just wanted to clarify those statements. I think there were some incorrect things said earlier, but...
All right, thank you. We will have that on the board. I want, I want you to understand your voting on the, Mr. Mansfield's resolution, up or down, and if it does not receive thirteen votes, then we're back to the original that's the budget committee passed to us. All right, it's on the board.
Motion?
Go ahead.
Oh, one read already. I'm sorry, it's the other direction. I'm sorry. My question is on Mr. Mansfield's motion. He's saying move the unencumbered amount or unallocated amount back to the Westmoreland EMS station. Is he saying if we move it back there to decrease the amount of capital by the same amount, the way they'll equal out to zero? Was that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, it's on the board.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
Does not receive necessary votes, so we're back to voting on the original resolution sent to us by budget. Seeing no one in the queue, we'll place that on the board.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
All right, the original pass is thirteen to five with two abstentions.
Mr. Chairman, our finance director has asked me to clarify on twenty-four twelve dash thirty, because there was some back and forth, just to make sure that there were, that that one is approved as-is, and there were no...
As-is.
Changes to it. Twenty-four twelve dash thirty-two, I believe, is moot at this point, as we have just voted for the last bit of, of ARPA funding, and it is now off the board. So, I would like to just hear that for confirmation from our finance director, but I believe that is the case.
Yes, sir.
So, that, that one is moot, and that concludes my report.
We ignore that one. That's complete. Financial management, election commission, who has responsibility for this ad hoc committee? Mr. Klein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a, done an analysis of the requests by the election commission, and we have responded to that, and I think Mr. Sittler... Okay, so, so, yes, it's, it's twenty-four twelve dash thirty-three, and I still move.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to keep...
I'm sorry, Mr. Harrison. Go ahead.
Before we vote...
Before we vote on this, which I know, I know that's already been a voice vote, but I also serve on this ad hoc committee, and the way I read this proposal, there's errors in it and I think some misstatements. And so, since we're in the business of clarifying, clarifying misstatements, I'd like to talk about some of them. Number one, there's a statement in here regarding two bay doors. Are we certain that there are two bay doors in that building? I've been told by three different people tonight that there are not. So, if we can't even get the minutia of the details correct, we don't even know what the rest of this is in error. Also, it's my understanding that the square footage that has been taken into account takes up all the storage that's in there now. So, what are we going to do with what's in there? There's also a statement in here in regards to that citizens, you know, we hear a lot in here about citizens. Citizens want all voting activities. Now, think about that. All voting activities to take place in this building. Now, in, uh, November, early voting, 63,698 people early voted. That's an average of 4,550 people per day. If all voting activities are going to take place in this building, can you imagine the chaos that's going to take place here? In addition to that, if you'll turn to your standing rules and procedures on page seven, Roman numeral 10 at the top of the page, it says, "The commission or a committee may appoint ad hoc and/or subcommittees as required." When did an ad hoc committee get on the agenda? Why didn't it go through the regular committee? Just asking questions. Did it go through legislative? Did legislative form it? And I'm on the committee, so I'm asking questions. I think this needs to be referred back through legislative. It needs to report to legislative.
We, we have, uh, I mistakenly overlooked your, your, uh, name in the queue. We have voted on it, so the opportunity to change that would be now. I'm, I've asked the clerk to place this on the board to reaffirm the vote. I think it was unanimous except for that inquiry. So, uh, if you will, it's on the board now.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
11 to nine. It does not move. Uh, so what is your, uh, inquiry? What do you want to do, um, Mr. Harrison? Commissioner Harris?
I guess we'll have another meeting. Or my recommendation, Mr. Chairman, just as a point of clarification would be, or a point of order, would be for this ad hoc committee to be reporting through legislative, and then legislative would bring that, any recommendation to the floor.
Okay.
That would be my recommendation, but that's not up to me. That's just a unilateral.
All right.
One of the clarifications, Chairman, on the information you formed this committee that became the chair...
It can come from legislative. Therefore, it's, that's why I guess I think the law director put it back on the agenda because it came from you appointing the committee. So...
Okay.
Just, just for the record.
Meeting adjourned. That's the end of the agenda.